Seeing that, it's 6:31. I am calling this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Situate to order, and I just want to let everybody know that obviously this is being broadcasted, obviously. There aren't, nobody, nobody else is in the audience at this time. So, I go to Agenda Item Number Two and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Will you accept?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2A. It is pending litigation, and we're looking to go into executive session on matters that are presently in litigation. If we were to discuss it in open form, it would be, have a detrimental effect. So, having said that, I'd accept a motion.
Move to go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Or shall we say, I think it's a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 I.
We will go into executive session and return once we've moved out. Thank you, folks. Folks, welcome back. We are in executive session on litigation matters. Now, we're back, open session, and now we're moving on to Item Number Three on the agenda, which is a Discussion Vote Signage Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee. On behalf of the applicant, I guess I'm looking for Officer Thompson. Is Officer Thompson here? I don't see him.
You need him, do you, Joe?
All right. It's pretty straightforward. This is basically what we're looking at, folks, for those on TV or trying to, in the audience here. On Stockbridge Road, near the intersection of Cary Litchfield, there's a yield sign. And if you're driving Stockbridge heading towards Brook Street, the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee is looking to change that yield sign to a stop sign. And the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee has requested and recommended that we, the Board of Selectmen, who are the authorities for signage... So, I think that pretty much sums it all up. Any questions?
Mr. Harris should make that motion. He was very instrumental in getting this.
Long time coming.
Fair enough.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to amend the traffic rules schedule and replace the yield sign at First Parish Road and on Stockbridge Road with a stop sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board or from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, very good. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. Discussion Vote for Drain Layers License. And right now, there happens to be one for Paul Grata, the President of Hub Construction and Maintenance Co. And the second one is for Makowitz, I believe. Makowitz Construction, Inc. These are renewals. Are they not, Kim, or ones new?
Hub Construction is new.
Is anybody here? Is Mr. Grata here, on behalf of Hub? Mr. Harris?
I don't see Paul out in the audience. I just know of him. They've been, and I see Mr. Cafferty out in the hallway. I'm sure he'd back me up on it. They've been in business forty, fifty years. A lot of, a lot of experience. I think they've, in emergency situations, been here in Situate and done stuff for us. So, I'm very comfortable that they're more than capable of getting a Drain Layers License.
Looks like they have all their paperwork in order. How does the board feel?
Motion?
Just a quick question for Al, if I may. Do we have some sort of rating? Like, if somebody did something poorly, would you know about it?
Yes.
Okay, and none of these people have any?
How do you define poorly?
Hub has, Hub does all of these sewer works in, um, H U L L, and has extensive practice there, so we're very confident.
Good. Motion? Motion, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a Drain Layers License to Hub Construction and Maintenance Company, Inc., out of Hull, Massachusetts.
Second.
Paul, right?
Hull, yes. H U L L.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to the second one.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a renewal of a Drain Layers License to Makowitz Contracting, Inc., three Winward Way, Situate, Massachusetts.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous folk. Very good. Moving on to Item Number Five on the agenda. A Discussion Vote, One Day Wine and Malt Beverage License for the foyer of Charity. And on behalf of the applicant, I think Father Bradley, are you there?
I am, yes.
Could you please come on up? Looks like you're looking for a one-day wine and beer license for, looks like a benefit you're having for the Friends of the Foyer. And this is on June 16th, which happens to be...
June 27th.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the date of the application, the 27th, so it's this week. From 4:00 to 7:30 PM.
4:00, yes.
Any questions from the board?
Motion, Chairman?
Sure.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the one-day wine and malt beverage license to the foyer of Charity, 74 Hollitt Street, for Sunday, June 27, 2010, from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM, for a garden party and benefit auction for the Friends of the Foyer.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Good luck with it.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. Discussion Vote, Outdoor Entertainment License for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club. I see Mr. Gard, and is this Mr. Hoffman? Thank you, gentlemen. Looks like you're looking for a outdoor entertainment license for July 10th, from 12:00 PM till 4:00 PM, with music to be provided. You have a regatta going on, held on that Saturday. Aside from that, any questions from the board? Seeing none?
Well, did you go out to the neighbors? I assume they're, you've got loud, amplified music, so you typically go out to neighbors, make sure they don't have a problem with it. You do this every year, right?
Yes, we do. Several times a year, and we are always conscious of the neighbors, and they're, you know, we are respectful for them, and we do try to keep the noise as, you know, equal as possible, and we address many issues that come up if they come up at the time of impact.
To my recollection, I don't think we've received a single complaint. Ever. So, it's a good point to make sure the neighbors are in the loop, but I, I've never heard anything negative about any of the functions that they, they have.
No, and their home's very close by, so, I mean, if you, if you were to hear something, I'm sure you'd hear it first, but then we'd hear it.
That's right. Good stuff. My motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, 84 Jericho Road, for a post-regatta party to be held on Saturday, July 10th, 2010, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, with music to be provided by a four-piece amplified band.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing
So, uh, my reappointment is not automatic?
No.
Any other questions from the Board?
Have you, have you been liaised onto that committee for a couple of decades, or...
Years, just a few years.
Oh, crap. So, you know quite a lot.
Yeah, yeah. I, I get what they're, uh, doing is all about, the process, and, uh, and we feel as though we contribute, and we're going to, particularly to the open space and the recommendation issues.
Just to be fair, Mr. Roberts is a native, if I'm not mistaken. He grew up here in Situate, right?
Yeah, they referred us as towns.
Towns. That's, that's, so he has a lot of wealth of information at Situate, so...
He'd be a great, that's a great person on the committee.
Thank you, Scott. You can hang around and stick around. We'll be voting later on. All right, moving on. Dale, and I'm sorry, is it Balog?
Balog.
Balog, I'm sorry, Dale. Come on up. Dale's looking for appointment to the Council on Aging. And there's only one opening. You seem to be the only person who's looking.
It looks pretty good.
Of course.
Do you want to say anything, just briefly? I know you, I know you've been working with the Council on Aging anyways.
Right, I've been volunteering as a senior since, um, at the holiday party, Christmas party in 2009, and, um, I began to give more and more of my time, and I found that I enjoyed it a real, a lot. So...
Good.
I like the seniors. I like them. That's all there is to it. And I think that, um, with my background of communication skills and working in customer service and planning events in my former workplaces, that I can use, utilize these skills, but my main goal is to just help the seniors help themselves.
You're doing a good job.
I like them.
That's fine. That's good. That's what we, people who are encouraged to want to get involved and be active, and you've already been doing that on a volunteer basis, and we thank you. Questions from the Board?
No.
Dale, you're welcome to stay. We won't probably get to it for about another hour or so, but if not, you can go home and watch us on TV.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't see any competition, but thank you very much, okay?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Bruce, meet him. Bruce, you're looking for appointment to the Renewable Energy Committee. Come on up.
True.
Briefly, do you want to give a little background, just for the Board, and primarily, we've got some backup, but again, for the audience and, and why you'd like appointment?
Absolutely. A townie in Norwell, not Situate, but I've lived here since 1981. Worked at Verizon with Bill Limbacher for many years, and then he bailed out, and Verizon bailed me out a year and a half ago, and it gave me a lot more free time to pursue interests. And an interest I've had for about three years has been renewable energy. I've been sitting at the Norwell Energy Committee meetings for the two and a half years that they have existed, and I was, for the last three years, attending Situate's Renewable Energy Committee meetings. And I even invited Bill Limbacher and Jay Silver to attend a Norwell meeting early on in their creation so that they could bring the Norwell Committee up to speed. And I've just been very interested in what's been going on. I think there's a tremendous opportunity for the town of Situate to use rooftops for solar, the landfill for solar. We already have the turbine planned for construction very soon, so that's something to look forward to. And the ocean management plan was passed by the governor in January, I believe, and that's another opportunity for Situate. We could have our own little Cape Wind right off the coastline between one and three miles out. If we step in fast enough, it's a first-come, first-served thing. We could have seven 3.6-megawatt machines sitting out there off of our own coast, and that's something we need to explore. We could ally with Hanover, Abington, and Norwell to do something like this, so it wouldn't be just the town funding it, and there's an opportunity there. So, there's a lot that can be done, and I'd like to be a part of it. I have an engineering degree, two master's degrees in all kinds of education, but no place to apply it at the moment.
It's a good, this is a good town to apply, I can tell you that. Is this an associate position, or is it a, is this a voting position, or the position?
It'd be a poll position.
Poll position, okay. Questions from the Board?
Well, just, Kim, on, on this one, what is, how many slots are available?
This is actually not, there's no description of how many slots are available, so, and it's a, it's an indefinite term. They're going to be in place as long as, you know, they need it, so...
I think this is an ad hoc committee, isn't it?
It's an ad hoc.
Because I don't think we've given it a formal charter, other than just in writing to the, to the Chair, Paul Reedy, who's doing this.
Bless his.
So, there's, there's no formal number in this sort of thing.
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carrie Cullen-Hitt, is she here tonight? Miss Hitt? Okay. She's looking for appointment to the Renewable Energy Committee also. Brad White, is Mr. White here?
Yes.
Mr. White, come on up. You're looking for the Waterways Commission. It's a reappointment, if I'm not mistaken.
Good evening. Yes, I'm, I currently an alternate on the Waterways Commission. I was appointed to that in, I think it was September or October of this past year.
I remember. And you're an associate, or the alternate, so to speak?
Yes.
No, I think it's associate. It's associate.
Associate, right.
And that's how we term it, as alternate, associate.
Alternate. I was just appointed to the Stillwagon, I'm sorry, to the, the NOAA Council for Stillwagon Bank, and I'm an alternate on that, so...
It's nice to have us elevated to the Stillwagon Bank Committee.
I'm pretty active. I'm a member of the Stillwagon Bank Charter Captain's Association, as well as the Northeast Charter Boat Captain's Association, and, uh, the, uh, New Inlet Boating Association. So, I'm very active in the waters here, and I'm very interested in, in the Board that I've been able to participate in. It's a good group, very industrious. They get a lot done, and I, and I enjoy pitching in.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
Again, just on this one, Kim, I know I'm a record player here. So, there's three people applying for how many slots? For two slots?
Two slots.
Okay. So, if you weren't picked into one of those two slots, would you still want to be an associate member?
Sure, absolutely. And I'd also like to rediscover that I'm a Marshfield resident, so I'm officially a townie, but I'm a bridge and tunnel townie. I live right over the bridge, so...
What's wrong with that?
I'm a dual-town.
How's that tunnel working out?
It depends what time, right?
Thank you very much, Mr. White.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mary McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin, come on up. You're looking for appointment for the Waterways Commission also.
Yes, I've been an associate for a year and a half. Work, um, in the boat industry. I do boat canvassing stuff out of Situate, Hummerock. I'd like to represent Hummerock. There's only me representing Hummerock at this point, so, um, I'm hoping that having, having somebody to represent Hummerock would be a good thing.
Would be a very good thing. So, questions from the Board?
And just again, there's three for two slots. Would you want to be an associate if?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. David Glancy, Mr. Glancy. You're also looking for appointment to the Waterways Commission.
Yes, I am.
Very good. Just briefly, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I've been involved in activities around the Situate waterfront for many years. I've done contracting-type work for most of the mariners in the harbor and on the rivers. And I've been recreational boating and some commercial marine activity.
Have you attended any of the meetings, or have you had any exposure, experience to the water?
I'm, I'm an associate member.
Oh, you already. I take that back. Yes, you have, so that's good enough. All right. Questions from the Board?
Want me to ask? Would you want to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, are you, you want to be an associate member?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you...
You say broken record. People might not understand that today's.
Yeah, that's right.
CD with scratch on it.
I'm a scratch CD.
Thank you, Mr. Glancy.
Sean had a question.
Just, just a comment. You know, Dave sold, sold himself a little short. I couldn't tell you how many years he and/or his brother has launched and taken boats out for the recreation department, for different regattas around the harbor. And, you know, I noticed, that's the type of guy he is. He's not going to toot his own horn, you know, and I just don't want that to go unnoticed. Dave's there anytime any of the mariners, private or public, need anything. They just call him. He's down with one of his cranes, you know. I'm sure for nothing, I'm sure.
Modesty goes a long way in my boat, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's it for the kind of meet and greet with the applicants. We're going to agenda item number eight, which happens to be walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins? Come on up. You have to tell me, or tell us your name and your address, please.
Sure. Um, my name is Marilyn Ward Howe. I own Sanzen Cafe. And please correct me if I'm not following the proper protocol, but there are three quick items that I'd like to address. I spoke to Mr. Norton about them. One is, I own a small cafe in Hummerock, and I'm asking the Situate Selectmen to please place the porta-potties in the parking lot in 2011 and thereafter, before Memorial Day. It's, my restaurant is the closest, in the closest proximity to the beach, and it becomes a terrible strain on my personnel to try to monitor that.
Okay.
So, that's a simple request. If you could please address that by 2011. They're there now. Thank you very much. But going forward, if you could possibly do that before Memorial Day, I'd be very appreciative. Number two. This year, you granted vendors, permits to hot dog vendors. And I understand that on many of our Situate beaches, there are no businesses in the near proximity. However, in Hummerock, I am within 150 feet of the vendor that you allowed to operate from. This vendor is now selling hot dogs, candy, sodas, and at an unfair advantage to my business because the vendor has placed him, her, or herself between myself and the ocean. And I certainly don't blame this person for doing so, but I'm paying over $8,000 a year in real estate taxes. I employ Situate residents, and it's a very difficult task to operate a Hummerock business during the winter. So, I would ask the Selectmen, going forward, to please consider restricting the Hummerock Beach public entrance as one of the places that the vendors could operate from. I understand that the permit is in existence, and I will have to live with it this year.
Fair enough.
But going forward, would you please consider that, you know, I have a, a business that I'm trying to sustain, and it's very difficult when somebody is placed in between myself and the beach.
Third item.
Thank you.
Yep.
The third item is, and it's on your agenda, is number 14, and I'd just like to add...
Tell you what, why don't you wait? If it's on our agenda, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm like, we're gonna, we're gonna get to that item.
No.
Just briefly, on the first two items.
Yep.
The first one, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that. I'm not sure if it's going to be feasible or whatnot, but we'll address that.
Thank you.
The second issue, I will say, certainly next year, and I appreciate you saying, wait till next year, we'll take that in consideration, because we, I, I think I can speak on behalf of the Board. Weren't aware of the distance and the impact, and I think we're all concerned about local business people who could be impacted by the vendors and the hockers peddlers. So, I can tell you right now, I'll remember that next year in particular, because that's one thing that I think would be unfair, and you're totally right on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do ask them, you know, when they're up, but we do ask them. I don't remember somebody saying they were going to go to Hummerock, because we kind of say, okay, you're going to stay in Sand Hills, and you're going to stay here, so...
Just, just briefly.
Yeah, just make it quick. Thank you for being so polite and allowing that to continue. It's, it's admirable.
Well, if I had the option, I'd love you not to.
Yeah. Let me just say, that, that person called me at my office before she came to this Board, and I do distinctly remember her telling us that she didn't want to sell product like ice cream, because that would be, you know, I, I realize you sell soda, I'm sure, but she was conscientious of the fact that you have a business there, and so I apologize. I couldn't agree more with what you're on. You obviously know the policy, 150 feet, and so the, that's what you have is unique. So, we'll have to address that and look at that and, you know, tweak it so it, it, you know, that doesn't happen. Couldn't agree more.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no other walk-ins, then. I'll move on to agenda item number nine. It is a hocker peddler's and common vicular's license for hammerheads. And if you could just identify yourself, is this Sean?
Sean Hannan.
Hannan, Mr. Hannan.
Yes.
What are you looking for? And you're from Gilson Road. You're a Situate resident?
Yes, from Gilson Road, yes.
I, I understand from your application, you're looking to be able to sell hot dogs, except not in Hummerock, but down on the Driftway, near Raymond's Paint.
Exactly.
And you've had authorization, some kind of lease with Raymond's Paint, the owner there?
Yes.
And what you need from us, this Board, is to be able to sell hot dogs in that location, correct?
It's not just hot dogs.
What else you're looking for?
Chowder burgers, fish sandwiches, grilled shrimp, stuff like that.
Is this from like a...
Ahi burger.
From a car? Is it from like a, you know, the...
Six-by-12 concession trailer.
You got pictures of it? Remember the email?
That will be non-mobile.
Okay.
It'll stay on that location. Won't move.
That was the one we got the photographs of, Kim, is that?
Yeah. So, it's non-mobile?
Right.
It's a trailer?
It's a mobile trailer that I'm not going to move from that spot.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna drive it there, park it wherever you and Raymond's Paint agree?
Right there on that spot. I'm actually going to have water and electric in our name, the business name. He has an outbuilding there that...
Yep.
Spruce Landscaping, I think, used. So, he actually, you know, allowed me to do that, so I'm going to transfer the utilities into our name, so I can have water and electric on-site.
Over by the propane tank?
Yes, probably to the, to the right side of it, if you're looking. Propane on the left. That'd be on the right side.
All right. All right, out of curiosity.
Sure.
Hammerheads, what's the name?
College nickname.
Okay. Your name?
Yes, mine. My wife's back there.
I'm sure there's a story there, which we might get later. I like, I like the fact that you're a Situate resident, and you're trying to make, you know, small business and try to make a go. I think, personally, I think it's great if you can go in there. It's, I don't think it's going to compete with Dunkin' Donuts. You're selling something completely different, and...
I'm not looking to do that.
What about Widow's Walk?
It's far enough away, I think, you know.
There's no, there's no seating or anything. It's...
There's no seating. I would like to add two to three picnic tables out there. He has a huge lot, tons of space.
You can go up the bike path and...
As long as I do it safely, that's, that's absolutely what I'd like to do.
Does this application include outside seating and all that? Does it need to? Because I just, I don't care one way or the other. I just want to make sure all the paperwork's in order, you know?
Sure, absolutely.
I was under the impression it was a walk-up-to-a-window type thing, get back in the car after, after the train. Get off the train, drive in. I didn't know there might be picnic table seating. I just want to make sure.
I think it'd be a shame to pass up that, you know.
I just want to make sure it's covered.
Great location. Oh, yeah.
Would Board of Health have to... Board of Health and Neil would cover that, right?
So...
Yeah, Jennifer has a whole file on me now.
Neil's already filed a letter saying it's zoned for it, so the only thing would be the Board of Health to make sure that it's clean and that she'll look at that.
So, who else may have a problem with this? The only other close restaurant is really Widow's Walk, right?
Morning Glory's Bakery.
Morning Glory's and PJ's.
Maybe even Reynolds. They sell hot dogs, but, you know.
Dunkin' Donuts. And Jamie at Widow's Walks.
I think Jamie's, I think, uh, caters to mostly people that golf there. I'm not sure there's too many walking up the street at Jamie's.
It's different.
I don't know.
It's different. What are your hours?
Jamie's does a great breakfast.
Can be pretty aggressive. I'd like to do breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Breakfast, I don't think, I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, I, I think once I'm there, I'm committed to it, and, uh...
So, is it five, seven days? How many, what are your...
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, from what?
I'd do it twelve months out of the year as well, is what I'm looking to do.
From like seven to seven, or what?
Um, probably 6:30, up until about 8:00. Usually, the traffic flow, you know, starts to slow down at that point.
6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
Every day.
Regular holidays?
Uh, yes.
I mean, like...
Yeah, with, with an option. I might close here or there.
Understood.
A week and see if somebody has any complaints?
It's not just hot dogs, though. A lot of the good stuff.
Well, this is brand-new, this concept, I guess, and I've seen, you know, we all are familiar with this type of operation around, as we drive around. But where it is brand-new, and we don't know the effect on competition or in local stores. This is a, is this a year license? Is this a...
That's what I'm looking to get, yeah.
For the year.
And it's a non-mobile. It's not...
Yeah, I understand. I, you know, I guess I'd be willing to vote for it now, with the understanding that probably be looking at it again at the end, at renewal time, just be looking at it again at the end, at renewal time, just to make sure that there weren't a ton of complaints or whatever. I'm not anticipating any at all, but, you know, if this was...
You can do it for any term you want.
Yeah.
You can do it for any term we wish?
Yeah.
Mr. Vignani?
Just, I, I had another thought and I'm, I like it and support it, but like, we just had a comment a minute ago about something that we didn't foresee. Would it make sense to wait until our next meeting to vote for it and see if anybody voices any complaints and then just vote, vote for it then? I mean, I don't see a direct conflict with anybody. I, I think it looks like you're selling a little bit more upscale food.
Yeah, I'd like to go more upscale.
And, you know, but it may come back where somebody has a problem with you selling hot dogs and we say you can't sell hot dogs, or something like that. I don't, I mean, I don't know, but I, I guess I would say, let's give the, the neighbors a chance to respond before we pass the license.
Mr. Murray?
I understand your point there, Tony. I do recall when, in the relatively recent past, within the last year, year and a half, a new restaurant was opening and several other restaurants came in and expressed concern about whether the town could support yet another restaurant and expressed concerns about competition. And while I found those arguments compelling, as did the rest of the board, I believe the board was unanimous in saying, well, that's sort of just the way it goes. I mean, that's what competition is sort of about. So I'm not, I am worried about concerns such as the Sands End Cafe pointed out, because that's a seasonal business and a seasonal thing and it's a mobile cart, so I see the Sands End concern as, as different from this one because you, you are operating a fixed, a fixed operation, which is essentially another structure in name, or at least in purpose.
I couldn't afford a restaurant, so...
I completely understand.
Right now.
I completely understand. So, you know, my only concern with, if we do, if we do as you suggest, then is that gonna necessarily change our views if some people say, well, yeah, I have a restaurant down the street? And then are we being inconsistent with what we talked about last time? The one thing I would be concerned about was if this was a neighborhood where there were homes, like right there, that could be disturbed at 6:30 AM. And I know there are a few homes in the area, but Mr. Duggan has indicated that it, it fulfills the zoning. It's allowable by zoning, so I'm sympathetic to the point, but that's just a counterpoint.
Mr. Norton?
May I ask, when did you plan to open up? When did you plan to?
Two weeks off, probably after, after the fourth at this point. I still have to be with Jennifer again, fight apartment, do all my, make sure I'm...
So you wouldn't be opening up until our next meeting anyway?
Probably three weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
You have the equipment now?
I have mostly the equipment. I have to go out and get a griddle or two. I have the fryolators. I have plenty of refrigeration, I have a freezer unit, nice, uh, lift-top freezer. I have a full fridge with a, with another, additional freezer capacity, I mean, so I'm all set on that end. I have a steam table. I'm looking to get, you know, kinda like a, an icebox of some sort to just keep everything. But most of the stuff I'm doing is small batches. I'm basically going from the fridge, I, I'm cooking just small amounts when I can. If I'm getting a rush, I'm gonna look to bulk that up, but, you know, I've been in the restaurant business since I was 14, so it's over 30 years. Worked as a managing partner at the Outback, Bogaboo Creek back when it was really good, on the border Mexican Cafe, always as a, like a 10% owner of the business, so, you know, I, I, I feel very confident in what I'm doing.
Let me, Mr. Hannan?
Yes.
Would you, and I think, I can't speak for the board members here, but I think it sounds like you're gonna probably get an approval. My position is yes, I'll, I'll give you approval. The only thing is, is that, would you be willing to come back? We're not meeting in two weeks, but we'll be meeting in three weeks. I think, it's not the six...
July 13th.
July 13th. Would that be...
I would say I probably need that much time anyway, so whatever you come to.
And the reason why I say this is because I don't wanna, like, give you false expectations. I make sure the board understands that, because I don't want you to go out and buy something and then find out that the board decides against it. But I will say this, that, you know, I, I have no problems with, you're in the business zone, number one. And it's tantamount, it's a fixed object, just as much as if somebody had a storefront that said, guess what, we're gonna open up a new restaurant or a takeout. And, and all the difference is, is that you're outside and you have a structure there. Second, it's business. Where, you know, if, if you're gonna be profitable, people are gonna go there. It's the question of the, how good is your product?
It's four walls, yeah.
So...
Worry about your four walls, you're doing a good job, people...
And people are gonna go. If you don't, then I'm sorry, that's gonna be a problem.
You don't.
The final thing is, I've seen this elsewhere, I've seen it being success. I think you're a little ambitious on your hours, but you know what, I commend you on being ambitious. But aside from that, other comments? Mr. Vignani?
Just one, I don't, I don't think, I wouldn't wanna hold him off for three weeks if we're just gonna approve it then.
Right.
Because if we're, the only thing that could happen in three weeks, in my opinion, was we would say no, because somebody came up with some compelling reason for us to say no. But I don't want him to invest any more time and energy under the false pretense that it's a yes in three weeks. So if, if that's, if you wanna vote it now, vote it now, but I don't wanna give him the impression that he's getting a yes in three weeks when it may not happen.
Yeah. I tend to agree. I, I wouldn't want him to go out and spend money and then turn around and have us, as Tony said, vote no, so I think, I guess we go out, we break the bullet, neither do it or don't do it, and...
Well, I'll make a motion and you guys can vote it down or not. I'll, I vote that we wait to, until our next meeting to, we postpone this till our next meeting.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that if I can make, for the purpose of discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'll vote for this. If we could notify Mr. Burwick, if any compelling issues come up that he may wanna be aware of that may make us vote no, so he would not go out and buy, if this, if they come up, that's all. I'm not anticipating any at all, I just don't want you to go out and spend a lot of money if, then find out that...
Don't have any. Don't worry about it.
I don't want you to borrow a lot of money. You know, that's my only thought, and I, I would vote for, would that be possible, I guess?
Well, I guess my point is, I'm, I'm a yes.
Yeah.
Unless a local merchant, like we just had five minutes ago, comes before us and says, here's a reason that you guys didn't think of, that it's not a good idea. And that's my personal opinion, so...
Even in a situation like that, you have to have that community, you know, kind of brotherhood or whatever you wanna call it, presence, where you're able to, you know, kinda be respectful of what somebody else, especially when somebody's established, that's, you know, that's one thing. But that person, the hot dog vendor, does have the right to do that, but that being said, I, I don't think they're particularly following the rules.
But if someone came in the week after you and said, I wanna put a hot dog vendor right across the, the parkway from them, then we'd have to consider...
Right.
That. You know, that's, so, that's, and, you know, I don't have a strong feeling on it, I'm just...
Mr. No, Mr. Harris?
Not just hot dogs.
I was just a little confused. I thought, Tony, with what you were saying, I was, I was gonna say, why wait? And I thought Tony was right on board until at the end, he said, in two or three weeks, why make him come back? Vote it up right now, if we're gonna do it. The only thing I see is if, you know, an established business, you know, they're gonna say, like the woman said earlier, they pay taxes, but I'm sure he's gonna be paying rent and so, let's, we're, you know...
So vote my motion down and put a new motion in.
I, that's where I thought you were going until the end. That's why I was confused. I looked at Rick and I think he said, thought the same thing.
I, I happened to agree with Sean. Okay, so why don't we do this? Let's, we've got a motion, seconded by Mr. Norton. All in favor of the motion, or discussion? Any further discussion on it? Seeing none? Any in the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Two in favor, any against?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye, nay. So three against two. Okay, motion fails. Is there a second motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a common vic and hockers peddler's license to Hammerhead's Grill, 17 Driftway Situate, to operate a food concession trailer, which is non-mobile, to serve food in compliance with all regulations set forth by the Board of Health.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? Any discussion from the floor? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any against, say nay?
Nay.
It's four to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Hannan. Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to agenda item number nine A. It's a discussion vote, one-day wine and malt beverage license to St. Mary's Parish. On behalf of St. Mary's Parish, if you could come up and identify yourselves, ladies?
Good evening, gentlemen. Betsy Croupie.
Good evening. Nancy Decost.
Do your addresses also, please, just for your dress.
58 Anne Vinyl Road.
22 Bell Tower Lane.
Okay. And ladies, you are looking on behalf of St. Mary's to be able to have a one-day malt, wine and malt beverage license for June 27th?
Yes.
That's the Saturday from 1 till 6 PM?
Sunday.
In the, or Sunday, I'm sorry. I said Saturday, my mistake. For a, it looks like a parish function, is that what I understand it to be?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay. Any discussion from the board or question, I'm sorry, any questions from the board? Seeing none? Any just, um, questions from the audience? Fair enough. Is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract, I got the wrong one, Mr. Chairman.
Here, I got one.
I got, move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages license to St. Mary of the Nativity Parish Center on 1 Ken Street for their annual family cookout on Sunday, June 27th, from 1 to 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norris. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ladies, thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number 10. A discussion vote for the request for proposal of uplands project concerning the Situate Marine Park. And on behalf of the applicant, I think it's Mr. Patterson, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Kevin, uh, Kevin?
Cafferty.
Cafferty. Kevin, I am so sorry, I was gonna say Creedon, and I apologize. Thank you. Gentlemen, could you please just briefly explain to us what you're looking for?
Uh, yes, we're requesting that a contract be awarded to Tibbetts Engineering for professional engineering services, for design engineering and permitting of upland improvements to the Situate Marine Park, to include walking trails, light, sight lighting, landscaping. This is sort of the park part of the Situate Marine Park. It's a community preservation project and we appreciate that very much. We had, I think we had six or, or seven firms take out the request for proposals. We looked at the proposals in two different ways. There was a technical fee approach that we looked at first and subsequently looked at the fee proposal. Based on, first, the technical proposal, and secondly, the fee proposal, the proposal by Tibbetts Engineering was seen as the, the best and most advantageous of the town, so we are recommending and requesting that the board award the contract to Tibbetts Engineering for $39,999.
Just two quick questions, if I may. First is, is, when I looked at this, the discrepancy between the first and the second, is that realistic? I mean, it, it, my question that came to head, came to my mind was, is it possible that they completely way underbid the whole thing and then will walk off the project, given what they're doing? That was the first question I had. And I think, Kevin, probably it's in your...
We looked at the proposals and, and we thought it was reasonable. They did a joint venture with a landscaped architect and Tibbetts had put the project together. We liked their proposal in the first place. Coastline seemed like they were doing it all themselves, but a lot of the plantings and everything probably isn't their expertise, so I, I'm not sure how they had it set up and they get into a lot of different permits. We sat down and we met with the principals that would be involved with Tibbetts and with the landscape architect firm, and they were confident that they could handle the project and do it. And they had a, they had a very extensive resume of projects that they had done.
Say no more, that makes me, the second question I had is, is it going to be somewhat handicap accessible so that we don't have...
Everything, everything would be handicap accessible.
Perfect.
That's all I needed to hear.
Mr. Vignani?
Just, is this just for the engineering, is this actually the work?
This is just the engineering.
So all they're gonna do is give you layouts of, put a tree here, put a bridge here?
Well, it's actually dune replication also, wetlands dune replication, any permits that we'd need, renewal for permits, and for the walking trails, sight lighting for, I believe one of the other things is movement of one of the buildings, of providing plans and potential upgrades for the electric system also.
So, again, it's just plans, no one's blazing any trails or building any things or putting up any lights?
None, no one's doing any things, it's the plans that were put together.
It's just for the engine.
And a lot of these were done kinda poachly. This hopefully encompasses everything and closes out the whole project.
Right. And where's the money coming from?
Community preservation.
C P M. Motion, Mr. Chair? Other questions, just before we do? Any questions from the audience? Sure.
Yeah, I was gonna add before the motion is, you know, here we have engineering and we got the Harbor Master and the Waterways Committee, and all three groups have been working hand in hand together real well on bringing this to fruition. And it's sort of the last, it's the start of the last phase of everything we were talking about when we bought the Marine Park four, five, or six years ago now. It being, you know, not just for the boaters, but for the whole open public, for people to enjoy off-season and on-season with walking trails, and this gets us going down that final And this gets us going down that final piece of the puzzle.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for improvements to the Situate Marine Park, including coastal dune replication, walking trails, landscape design, and sight lighting to Tibbetts Engineering Corp. for the low bid of $39,999.
Is there a second?
$990.
Second.
Discussion from the Board? Saying none?
One last question.
Yep.
Is this money already, is this money left over from an existing article?
This money has been voted and appropriated.
And appropriated. And you have more money left over after that to actually do the work?
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Roberts? If you could just, could you just identify yourself?
Scott Roberts.
Dress.
Is the money coming from, from the Waterways?
This is a community preservation project.
CPA.
Yes.
Good. Any other questions? Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you, folks. All right. Moving on to agenda item number 11. It's a discussion vote, water rate increase. Mr. Banger? And...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DeBarros, thank you.
Yes. I want to introduce you to Mr. Jim DeBarros, who is the interim water superintendent for the town of Situate, been filling in following Gene Babbin's retirement on February 28th, doing a very nice job. Thank you. So this is his chance to shine in front of the crowd here. So go ahead, Jim, and leave the discussion.
There you are, Jim.
Yeah, no, I won't, I won't do that to you. Okay. The Department of Public Works initiated a capital program three, or maybe now four years ago, to upgrade the town's very old water distribution system, which was installed initially in 1902. This has led to the horrendous problem of literally weekly water main breaks, which cause disturbances in the system, stir everything up. People lose service, as well as stirs up brown water issues. And also, the fact that the pipes are old and rusty, and they're difficult to clean. So, the Board of Selectmen instructed the department to proceed at a pace that was of replacing these, this important infrastructure at a rate that can be funded by no more than a 5% increase in rates per year. We've done this for several years now. The Water Department proposes that we make a water usage rate increase across the board of 5% effective July 1st, and this will allow us to continue to move forward. The, the change of plus 5% is on that little chart right in front of you. This results in an increase for the average typical household user from $350 a year for their water, to $386 per year for their water, or an $18 increase.
$368.
$368. I apologize, yeah. An $18 per year increase. Our rates still remain very competitive in the region. We're among the lowest in southeast Massachusetts. After the proposed rate increase, if you look at the 11 towns surrounding us, we fall in position number nine, with coacid rates at around $919 per family, but I think it's gone up recently. Hingham in that same range, Holland that same range, Weymouth, and Duxbury in the mid to high 400s, Norwell in the mid, at 450, Rockland at 426, Marshfield at 379, Situate at 368. Pembroke is a little lower at 333, and Plymouth is a lot lower because of the, the heavy industrial base they have, keeps their rates low, I guess. So with that, what we'll do is, we will take the additional revenue, will all be dumped, will all be put back into the system for replacing pipes. We're working on replacing the lines on Tilden, Stockbridge, cleaning and lining of the remaining section of Country Way, working on replacing the lines on Hollitt, and then in the following year, working on replacing the lines on Hadley Road in the mine area as part of that, done at the same time as we do the sewer project, if that happens.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I completely support this, and I really enjoy the presentation. And, you know, we started doing this a couple of years ago, and we're really seeing tangible benefits, and this is outstanding. One question I just have for, for just future reference. That listing you provided does show that our annual cost for the average family is way down on that list. It's actually not a rate, though. That's an annual cost. So, another way of interpreting that, for example, coacid could have a lower rate, but they could use, the average house could use a lot more water.
No, actually, this...
As listed.
If I could speak to that?
Sure.
So that you don't, just to clarify the calculation. The calculation here is actually done by an independent third party, tie-in bond, who does a survey of water rates throughout Massachusetts. And then they, they take what it costs for your monthly meter charge, what it costs for your first this, that, and the other, and calculates for the average family using 12,000 cubic feet of water per year.
Okay.
That calculates out in coacid to $919 and to Situate.
So this is normalized to a constant use?
For a constant, yes.
So therefore, it does track through to a different, to a, to the rate? Okay.
Correct. Perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Vignani?
If I remember correctly, this was a five-year plan that we, that actually Joe and Sean, I don't know if you were here when the first time, when...
I was.
When that was agreed to. So is this year five of that, or four?
I think this is year four of that, Tony.
Okay. I think it's great. I mean, one of the biggest complaints we get is brown water, and this is the only way to fix it.
Yeah.
You know, you can go in Al's office, and he'll show you a piece of pipe that shows what causes this stuff. And if we don't keep investing in the infrastructure, you know, it's just gonna continue to fall apart. So I think it's great work, and this is, you know, you can see our rates are still...
And there's two aspects to it, too. There's the, the, it takes a long time for pipes to degrade, but on the other hand, it's been a long time since 1902. On the other hand, there are some immediate things that, that can be done, and that Mr. DeBarros started this year, which was a very aggressive flushing program with a very high public awareness of the program. Now, we'd still had some glitches. You'll find people who had some terrible situations beset upon them. We're gonna continue to do that flushing. We think this first flush was the worst flush. We're gonna continue to flush, and Mr. DeBarros will monitor that, and we'll do it probably twice per year until we're sure we've got the system straightened out.
We want the consumer confidence back.
Mr. Norton?
Yeah, just to follow up on Tony's comments. It was a five-year program, it was the fourth year. So if we did nothing tonight, okay, water increases go up 5% starting July 1st, we did nothing, because of the vote we took...
Yes.
Five years ago, four years ago?
No.
No, you have to vote, you, you wanted to reserve the right to increase it every, to make the decision every year.
So we didn't vote at that time to increase it automatically 5% every year?
Correct.
Thought we did.
You wanted to reevaluate the system entirely.
So this is not any great increase over and above what we voted four years ago?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
At what point, I had toured the water treatment plant, at what point will you be satisfied that our distribution system is updated to the point where you might go back to the plant? Because I was talking to a longtime plumber, Tom Galligan, in town, and said that your, that our plant is really outdated. But the water looks very clean when it leaves your plant, Jimmy, so it's, I, while, while you're both here, and Kevin's here...
The plant's processing properly. We meet all the state regulations and everything, and all the monitoring is done properly and everything, so we're meeting all the standards that we need to do that. But what the problem is, is the infrastructure and the pipes that are really causing the problems, the discoloration.
So you'll continue to do that for us, until we get that updated, all right?
Yeah, we're happy, because the quality of the water that leaves the plant is excellent.
Right.
The other thing that, that Mr. DeBarros is starting on is bringing, is redeveloping our wells. Our, over time, wells produce less and less as they become more and more clogged, if you will. And by fracking the wells, you create more water capability from our wells, which reduces the need to run the more expensive treatment plant as often. So we can, we're looking at not only just raising rates, but how can we find more efficient ways of producing the water and the water supply that we need to lower the internal cost as well.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, just two things. One, to Sean, your point, I think was within the last two years that they replaced the GAC bed, the activated carbon bed in the plant. So they have been doing a lot of upgrades to the plant as well, to help, to help keep the plant going. And I think that came forth as part of a capital plan, maybe three years ago, or two years ago, or something. So that's one of the reasons why the plant is, is continuing to do well. And then, Joe, to your point, yeah, we did say we would like to revisit the rates each year, but we wanted to give a clear message to DPW for their long-term planning purposes that unless everything went, you know, wacky, they could expect us to continue with the 5% per year, particularly considering that we were down on the low end of the, of the, of the rate scale then, as we continue to be. I'm very surprised to see, in a good way, that our rates are still in the lower 20% of our neighboring communities, despite the fact we've put in 5% increases each year for the last three years.
Motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to increase water service and usage rates by 5% effective July 1, 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Discussion? Any discussion questions from the audience? Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sounds like it's three, three, zero.
Five, zero.
Five. It's unanimous. I didn't hear it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number 12. It is a discussion vote for fiscal year 11, or 2011, the general liability and related insurance. Tricia?
I have a memo in your packet that outlines the bid results for going out to bid on the town's general liability, police and fire, and marina policy insurance, in keeping with some of the actions the board has taken early this year, voiding contracts. We went out to bid on the, this coverage, and as you can see, it paid off over prior budgetary line items that we've been appropriating. So I would ask for the board's approval for the FY 11 coverage in the amount of $387,489.
Questions from the Board?
Just a comment, it looks like it's a savings of almost $80,000, is it?
Ninety, ninety-three.
Ninety, ninety-three thousand.
That's just for the insurance coverage. I still want to hold some back, because we have never budgeted for deductibles. So, and we do have property losses during the year, so...
Right.
But I'd say there's still significant savings there.
Right.
Mr. Harris?
Is this something you thought of? I, I just wrote a note to Joe that I don't remember seeing this on an annual basis.
Well, that's why we went out to bid. The board has to vote any contract over $25,000. The prior contract was not authorized by the board, so I voided it.
That's right.
Like I said earlier, I love modesty. Yes, you did. Mr. Murray?
I was just gonna point that out. You pointed out how Dave Glancy was very modest, and I was just gonna thank you, Tricia. I'm sure I'm speaking for the Board on this. This was entirely your discovery and your effort, and you just saved the town $93,000.
Questions from the audience? Saying none? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move...
Or is there a question? Did you have one, or Mr.? Motion, Mr. Vignani?
Move the Board of Selectmen award the town's fiscal year 11 insurance coverage to the Joseph Insurance Agency for a bid quote of $387,489.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Saying none? Discussion from the floor? Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Very good. Moving on to our next item, which is the vote, year-end transfers.
Again, memo in your packet about the annual dance, I guess, for lack of a better word, that municipalities have as the fiscal year ends, and they're trying to project out any account shortfalls, or any surpluses that they can identify to cover those shortfalls. The town has a reserve fund that has $90,000 in it. I'm happy to say, as I note in the memo, that we have not used any of that as of June 22nd today, which I don't know is a first, but is pretty unusual. So what, and, and in accordance with the statute that changed about three years ago, in May and June, the board with the approval of the advisory committee can take identified surpluses and other line items and move that to cover other account shortfalls and line items. So Mary, if you want to come up, because I know you're hiding back there. Mary and I have met several times over the past two weeks to identify those accounts that need some administrative votes and changes to move money around. The financial trend report that you folks have seen this year, and the fact that we've done a few changes as far as writing heard on departments for expenditures, has allowed us to pretty much be in good shape, so we're not in danger at this point of having significant financial challenges as we head into FY 11. So the attached, and I can provide any different additional explanation or detail that you have. The top part is what is really an account shortfall that's not due to an emergency or unforeseen expenditure. It's just, the account went over what we budgeted. Legal expenses particularly is one that's very hard to project from year to year. Tax title, the board knows about. Jane has told you about the very aggressive stance the town is taking on any delinquencies relative to taxes. Postage is a yearly thing, and then labor council, as you know, all five of our union contracts are expired, so those costs in the year that the contracts are being negotiated are always gonna be higher. So we've identified surpluses in debt service in the fire department, and would ask for a motion to approve those in that amount to cover those deficits.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the initial listing of reserve fund transfers and line item transfers as recommended by the town administrator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion from the Board? Saying none? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Roberts?
I have just a question on the advisory committee role on post-transfers at this point.
You, once the board votes them, Scott, then the advisory committee has to have a meeting by July 15 to approve them all. I gave a preliminary list of this to Bob DiLorenzo two weeks ago, so he knows that you have to have a meeting. The second part of this is reserve funds transfers. As I've noted, reserve fund transfers are by statute for emergency or unforeseen circumstances. Historically, we really have not used it in that manner. However, the ones that you see there are items that were not anticipated or were emergencies during the last fiscal year, specifically under legal services, although you approve some above, because the budget's hard to project. The other expenditure here was unforeseen. 99% of that is for the Pier 44 work, and the Wampe Tuck override and associated town meeting stuff for our town council to do. That was obviously unanticipated. Streetlights in February received a 14% increase notice from National Grid, temporary conservation agent during the medical absence of the conservation agent that we'd had to do, veteran service benefits for increased benefits that the federal government authorized. And the last one, and the highest amount, is for DPW personal services, which were, as a result of three retirements in the DPW, and accumulated benefits in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement that those individuals were owed at the time of retirement.
Questions, Mr. Vignani?
So, the last one you explained, it's a one-time expense, so we don't have to worry about it fiscal year 2011. Have the other shortfalls been incorporated in fiscal year 11 budget?
Yes.
I mean, the only other very large one, well, streetlights, I assume we put that at the increased rate?
Yep.
And then the labor council, do we expect that to be as high next year?
Perhaps.
Not from the town, I hope.
Hope not.
That budget was already increased in FY 11, so yes, it will be less, but not a lot, probably.
So, so anyways, we've taken into account these increases as we go into the next year's budget?
It's really hard to reject a retirement a year in advance. We're doing, you know, departments are submitting their budgets the first week in December. So you're saying anybody who can retire 18 months out from that, even longer, we need, we can't anticipate that.
Yeah, that one, I, that one I understand.
It's really high. But it's a big number.
Yeah.
Mary, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm all...
Mr. Harris?
Just one quick question. Tricia or Al maybe might have the answer for this. The energy companies are coming into our homes to replace lighting like they did here at Town Hall. Is there any programs that will do that in streetlights?
Yes, and the, at renewable energy committee's looking at that, and Al and I have actually talked about this. This is actually lower than it probably would have been, because we voided the current electricity costs last fall, and went with the default rate for National Grid, so it's actually less than it probably would have been had that not happened. But Al's very much aware of it, and we have some ideas in terms of our streetlight inventory, and replacing more effective lighting, and things like that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any questions from the audience? All right. We already have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Very good. All right. Anybody who has a cell phone, please turn it off, and anybody who has a hat on, please take it off. Would like to move on to the next agenda item, number 14. It is a discussion on the beach sticker policy. And Mr. Vignani had requested this, and I guess, if you'd like, if you want to just, Tony, kind of inform what we're doing?
Yeah, I, what I, what I wanted to do is just bring this topic back up for, for conversation and consideration. We have, you know, we, a committee got together and made some proposals for some policy for, for the selectmen to make, and we did. And since that time, we've gotten a lot of feedback, and had time to reconsider some of it. And I have some opinions on, on whether we should reconsider the price, and I just wanted to have some, some open discussion on that. My concerns are a few. Number one, I think we have a unique relationship with Marshfield, where we rely on them for some stuff, and, and where they are actually closer to our beach, Hummerock Beach anyways, than we are. And I think it's important to keep that relationship strong. The rate did go up a lot of money. It went up 800%. And at this point in time, based on the numbers we just got today, I think we've sold 10 Marshfield stickers compared to 300 in the prior years. So it's clearly had a big impact on, on the revenue there. I'm a little confused on the sheet that we got, but I just wanted to make sure I understood the budget for the beach, it's not enterprise fund, but the beach operations. And then, my suggestion is to reduce that, that ticket amount, or the sticker amount, make it solely usable in Hummerock, and have an increase in revenue and the potential of selling more tickets at a, at a reduced rate. My proposal would be somewhere in the $100 to $90 rate. My other concern is for the businesses in the area. If people aren't going to the beaches there, then I think that it will have a detrimental effect on the, on the few Situate beaches over there. Those are the points of discussion that I wanted to, to bring up, and get the feedback from the Board.
Just so that people understand that the Board, was it April, or May? I forgot when we enacted the policy.
February.
February, okay. There was a committee put together, employee, town employees, including town administrator, to take a look into this potential policy to create for opening up the town of Situate beaches to non-residents. And the committee came back, made some suggestions. The Board voted on it. And as it presently stands, just by way of background, so people who are sitting here and people who are watching, if there is a non-resident, this does not apply to Situate residents, but non-residents, they are to pay $200 for a sticker to be able to access all of Situate beaches. And so, that, I think, is that fair to act? Is that a fair representation of what the policy is presently? This is not, we're not talking about Situate residents here, so...
The only change, the change from, historically, it had been that Marshfield residents could buy it at the town, at the...
Town rate.
Town rate.
I should back that up. Aside from the sheer, Marshfield residents had the ability to purchase a sticker to go to Hummerock at the town rate that the Situate town people would pay. Mr. Mayor?
If I may, through the chair, ask Tony a question. So, Tony, your proposal, just for clarification, is to keep the, this is correct, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I want to know, I want to make sure I know what you're talking about. Is to keep it for two hundred for non-Mmarshfield residents? So, basically have three stickers, have a Situate residence sticker, which is for Situate residents, all beaches, including Hummerock, a Marshfield residence only, and only to be used at Hummerock, at like a hundred.
Right.
And all non-residents, including Marshfield if they wish, two hundred for all Situate beaches. Is that correct? So, there'd be three different? Well, I believe the two are the same, right? Is there a different sticker for, is there a different colored sticker for resident and non-resident? No, it's the same sticker, but the price...
There's a gap on the non-resident of three hundred. The first three hundred were taken off the top, and those are non-resident.
Yeah, so it's...
But it's the same sticker.
It's the same sticker, but I meant...
Different price structure.
Different price structure. Yeah, it's the same colored little sticker, but I mean, there's three different tiers of T-I-E-R-S of payment.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you were proposing.
Right, that's what I'm just bringing up for discussion.
Mr. Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was happy the Board suggested that it go back to the committee to look at it, and at the time we suggested that, I had said that I would abide by their reconsideration of the issue. They came up and said to reduce it, that was fine with me, and if they said keep it the same, that also was fine with me. After meeting again, my understanding is they're voted to keep it the same this year and to relook at it when they put this together next year, and I strongly suggest, you know, would like to see them relook at it for next year. I accept their thoughts that it would be very difficult to change it this year, and again, as I say, when I, when we suggested it go back to the committee, I had made up my mind that whatever they came back with was my, is what I would support. So, they come back with keeping it the same for this year, I'll support that with the strong recommendation that they relook at it, that aspect of it, the two hundred dollars from Marshfield, strongly look at that again next year.
Mr. Harris?
Couldn't agree more with Joe. We ask committees to do stuff, and then if we don't follow their recommendations, who's going to be so willing to jump, sit on a committee? Is it perfect? No, but I just think it might be a little too late in the season to change it right now. I would, like Joe said, I would strongly try to convince this committee that this gets changed, and I couldn't agree more with you, Tony, I like the idea for next year. I like the idea of what you've said, but it's just, it's too late. I got the phone calls, I got the emails from people that grew up in Situate, raised families, moved to Marshfield, and have been going to the Hummerock Beaches for many years, Hummerock Beach, so they were quite upset. Is it, like I said, it's not perfect, but it is, it's kind of late right now to change it, in my opinion.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, if I could just respond to that. I think, I appreciate all the work that the committee did, I think they looked into it time and time again and came up with stuff and did all the research. I think when we find that something's wrong, we're the policy-setting entity in the town, and I think that you correct, you correct it right away. I think by both of you saying that we should strongly recommend looking at it next year is almost some sort of agreement that there's, that the policy should be reconsidered, and I don't know why we would wait to reconsider it. I think what's going to happen over the years, you're going to create bad will and put stress on a relationship with a neighbor that we rely on. I think that there's a lot of citizens that are going to be affected in terms of business in that area, and I think if we, it's our duty, if we think that something is incorrect, that we should correct it as quickly as possible. And I'm not trying to burden anybody in Town Hall by having them have to do any more work. I also see an opportunity to make revenue. I think that there's going to be a lot of people that just flat out aren't going to buy stickers, and that that's going to be potentially tens of thousands of dollars that the town is not going to have. So, I think it's a win-win. I think that if we, as a collective Board, believe that something's wrong, that we should fix it right away, and I think that that's what we should do in this case.
Questions from the audience? A number hand, so we'll get to everybody. I'll tell you what, hold off for one second, Mr. Bangert. If I could start over here with Ms. Burbine. Could you state your name and, yes, your address?
I'm Ten Penning, Chris Row. I could not agree more with Mr. Vignani. I think he's absolutely correct. If something is broken, in spite of the fact that people have worked so desperately hard on this, we are collecting money from out-of-towners. Marshfield historically, as pointed out, has paid thirty-five to Argus, the going rate. Last year it was twenty-five, this year it's thirty-five. Mr. Vignani is correct, we will lose thousands of dollars. We've sold ten stickers at two hundred dollars, that's two thousand, as opposed to how many? Three hundred plus from last year? Multiply it out, gentlemen.
I'll do that for you. The difference is, this year it's two thousand dollars from the ten, because ten times two hundred is two thousand, and last year, because the residents had three hundred and fourteen at twenty-five dollars, it was seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty. So, the difference is five thousand and eight hundred and fifty dollars. That's the difference that we're talking about. Mr., hold on, hold on, you've already had your chance. Ms. Burbine, we're going to go to the next gentleman. Could you state your name?
Brad White from Marshfield.
Yes.
I'm a user of that beach area three times a week, and an eight hundred percent increase in anything in life is over the top. That sticker should be no more than thirty-five dollars, because what we're creating with the two hundred dollar sticker is great private enterprise for people sprouting up cottage industry parking lots at five to ten dollars a pop, and that town is a ghost town right now. When we take a look at the San Zen Cafe, weather the storm of Bridge Me Do, Humming Rock Gifts, the pet supply store down there, these folks are dying on the vine in a tough economy, so with the two hundred dollar ticket, we are dissuading any resident from using that beautiful beach. So, my recommendation is if you need to increase, maybe, is it now twenty-five or thirty-five dollars? What is the current, what was it, thirty-five dollars?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Thirty-five for a Situate resident.
So, go to thirty-five, invite people to the beach, it's one of the last free recreational resources we have, and it will help stimulate and help these businesses that only have sixteen weekends a year, and if you do the math, only forty percent through the summer, it's very easy to make a pen keystroke to change the rate from two hundred down to thirty-five or forty. I strongly recommend that. We need to support these merchants. She's paying at the Sands and Cafe, she reported eight to ten thousand dollars in taxes. That tax money won't happen if she doesn't have a tax base. So, let's encourage people to come visit the beautiful beach of Hummerock and not spoof them by charging mysterious rates. I mean, that's a Duxbury Beach rate, and people buying Duxbury Beach tickets have declined significantly when they increase that from one fifty to two fifty, almost three hundred dollars. So, my recommendation is change it now. Thank you.
A gentleman in the back, could you state your name and address, please?
I'm John Hall from Marshfield, a member of the Marshfield Select Board, and I wanted to come by tonight and ask the Board's consideration on this. I live less than a mile from Hummerock Beach. I bought my house in Marshfield because of the proximity to Hummerock. Green Harbor is a section of Marshfield, but that's not my neighborhood. Brent Rock is a section of Marshfield, but that's not my neighborhood. My neighborhood is the Sea View, Hummerock section of Marshfield in Situate. I was by the beach there on Saturday. There was twelve cars in the park lot on Saturday. I was there on Sunday, there was fifteen cars in the park lot. There was twenty-seven cars in the two days, and there was probably enough room for, what? What's a park lot hold? Sixty, seventy cars? But there was twenty-seven in the two days, and both days were beach days. And out of those stickers, there was no two thousand and ten Situate beach sticker. Most of them, like twenty-two out of the twenty-seven, had white, Marshfield, Hummerock beach stickers that we bought last year. There was no two thousand and ten stickers in the park lot, and that's what's going to happen this summer. People just aren't going to spend that kind of money, and the park lot is going to be empty. People from Situate did not travel over to Hummerock to go to the beach, nor did we go over to the other Situate beaches. We had our own color that your Board and the Town provided for us, and everybody was always appreciative of that, because everybody feels if you live less than a mile, that's your neighborhood. And everybody took it kind of personal in my neighborhood, that we just, we just liked anybody else from anybody in town, despite the unique geographical situation they have with Situate. And I would urge the Board to please recommend a lowering in a separate color beach sticker like we've always enjoyed in the past. And I know myself, I kind of talk to everybody, but I think a fee of fifty dollars, which would be double of what we paid last year, everybody in my part of town would be very comfortable with that. And your own merchants, with your tax bases in Hummerock, I'm sure they would mirror my feelings to you about exactly. Thank you very much, Joe.
Mr. Hall, thank you very much. It's always, it's nice to have selectmen from surrounding towns to come and appreciate and encourage you, other Board members, anything that's important, to please come. If my, my understanding is Marshfield has five public beaches? Wrexham, Fieldstone, Sunrise, Brant, and Green Harbor?
Yes.
How many, if I'm not mistaken, do you know how many non-resident beach stickers Marshfield has?
We don't have that option.
Okay, so Situate residents cannot go to Marshfield beaches?
Sure you can, you can buy a day pass.
By a day pass, but we can't get a full year-round pass that we're offering to Marshfield residents? Is that correct?
We have, we do have resident-only stickers, but...
Right.
Like I said, the unique situation is that Situate residents from the other side of the bridge don't come to Hummerock, and we don't go over to the other side of Situate. It's just because I live less than a mile from the beach that that's why we frequent that beach, because of geographic location, no other reason.
Okay, but I guess my point is, is that unless Situate residents, unlike Marshfield residents, they have an opportunity to buy a year-round pass for two hundred dollars to come to Situate, as well as Norwell, Cohasset, surrounding towns, and their whole list, as far as I think Burlington, actually, we as Situate residents don't have an opportunity to buy a year-round pass to go to any of these beaches, other than a day pass. That's the only option that we have from Situate to Marshfield. Other questions? Or, Mr. Norton?
Just a comment, Mr. Hall was instrumental in procuring the signatures on the petitions, the hundred and fifty or two hundred signatures that you all had an opportunity to look. I just want to acknowledge the fact that he brought that to our attention and presented those positions, those petitions to the Board, so thank you.
Mr. Bangert, you're here on behalf of the Beach Sticker Committee, if I'm not mistaken, and you wrote a memorandum to the Board, basically listing what the committee had evaluated, reconsidered, and then ultimately concluded that in the opinion of the committee, it did not support entertaining discussion of any changes at this time, and it's basically...
Right. First of all, recognize that this is, this is not about using Situate beaches at all. Anyone from Hummerock, there is no bicycle parking sticker for the beaches, there is no walk across the bridge sticker for the beaches. This is simply about using Situate parking lots, which by the way, are in absolutely miserable shape. That's the background. The last fall, the selectmen asked the Town Administrator to recommend a way to fix the beach cost structure, much like a year before that was recommended, let's fix the transfer station cost structure, where the transfer station users and the costs were not being paid appropriately, so as a result, the Situate taxpayer ended up paying for much of the cost of, some of the cost of the transfer station. That is clearly the case with the maintenance of the beach operation. You requested that ultimately beach users, not taxpayers, pay for the cost of maintaining these areas. So, the committee was formed and analyzed the situation and determined that in fiscal year 2010, the current year we're in, they were just finishing, and not counting next year's revenue, that the annual revenue for the beach sticker was one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. Now, first of all, two-thirds of that went to the schools, and the remaining forty thousand dollars was then used to operate, maintain the beaches, the parking lots, do the repairs, line striping, et cetera. With that forty thousand dollars, the first thing we did was we went out and hired one hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of lifeguards, spent nine thousand dollars on trash pickup, eight thousand dollars in police enforcement, four thousand in public health water testing, eighteen thousand in dead seed we removal, two thousand in toilet rental, and seven thousand in printing and postage for stickers and the multiple stickers that we had.
It's a good thing we're not in for profit then on this.
So, the hundred and sixteen in total revenue, and certainly not the forty thousand, didn't come close to covering that one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of cost that's generally subsidized now by the Situate taxpayers.
And has been for how many years?
And has been forever.
Forever.
Now, the committee, therefore, that's why we're trying to fix something. If something's not right, if something's broke, you try to fix it. So, the committee was charged with fixing that. They did a competitive analysis versus other communities and made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and after the Board's vote, the committee then duly executed this plan, and it's been underway. The financial plan raised the cost for all users, let's be clear on that. Situate residents, the beach cost for Situate residents went up sixty-six thousand dollars, more revenue, sixty-six thousand dollars, relatively few complaints. The committee also recommended that the Town had an opportunity to raise more money by making a limited number of stickers available to non-residents, open the field. We projected that this would raise an additional fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue and would close the gap between those high costs and the lack of revenue coming in. So, the price for these non-resident stickers was based upon an analysis of neighboring towns. Other beach towns allow non-residents to buy passes for their beaches at the one seventy-five to two twenty-five range, namely Duxbury, Plymouth, Yarmouth, Falmouth, Orleans, Wellfleet, and Brewster, all which have stickers for non-residents, have them at that range. So, that's how the price was established. Nearby Marshfield and Cohasset don't allow any non-residents to use of their beaches, but so they, that didn't count into it in terms of the seasonal pass. Now, has it worked? Well, as of last week, the Town sold a hundred and fourteen non-resident stickers, primarily to our neighbors in Norwell, Hingham, and in some in Ten and Marshfield. This provides the Town already with the twenty-three thousand dollars. The money to operate and fix these beaches, these parking lots and the beaches, is really needed, desperately needed by the Town. If you look at our beach parking lots, for instance, which tends to fall into my venue as a DPW guy, much of the lot at Peggity is below water, high tide, and we recently had an unfortunate situation where a new Situate school teacher was at the beach, came back, and her car was completely destroyed because the water had come up beyond the level of her doors, and the car was totaled. We can't have that situation, we've got to fix that parking lot, asking people to pay to use that parking lot. Secondly, the second lot at Minnet can't be line striped because it's just not possible line stripe, it's not paved or anything. The result is, weekly, on the weekends, the police are called out because people's cars are blocked in because of random parking, and cars are towed, and people are on the beach questioning whose car is the black Toyota and could we move it, et cetera. And then both the Hummerock and Egypt lots are in terrible shape and need to be paved, line striped, cleaned, swept, and of course, there's opportunities in all of them to improve handicap accessibility, handicap toilets, handicap ramps that are better than what we have now. So, it's really, unfortunately, it's all about the money. We don't have enough money to run our beaches, we want to sell non-resident stickers, two hundred dollars is a good price based upon what all of our neighboring beaches that sell non-resident stickers, sell them for, and we're successful at that in that last year, our non-resident sticker total income was seven thousand dollars. Already this year is twenty-three thousand dollars, and the line was out the door this morning, this evening, this evening. So, I'm very comfortable...
For non-residents? That was a non-resident line?
I don't know how many non-residents we sold, I can't tell you that, but, so this only counts through last week. Last year, non-resident stickers were seven thousand, this year twenty-three thousand. And, you know, it's not like, you know, I've heard bandied about that, oh gee, we're getting a great deal on water in Hummerock, in Marshfield, and we ought to account for the water in Marshfield, but I'm also the water guy, as you know, and the water rates are such that our average Hummerock Situate user, we bill three hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year for their water, and then we pay, turn around and pay Marshfield five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for that water. So, we pay a hundred and ninety-one dollars more for the water than we're able to bill our Situate residents for. Meanwhile, Hummerock on that side of the, on the side of the other bridge, Marshfield, is billing the water customers the same thing we're billing our water customers, three eighty. So, it's, they say it's a two-way street, but this is not a getcha kind of thing, it's just simply we have Marshfield, Norwell, Hingham, and other towns who want to use our beaches, some don't have beaches, we have a chance to open the beaches to those other towns. It seems to me that fair play is everyone gets to use the Situate beaches if they're willing to pay to play. And with that, I'll back away. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Vignani?
The only thing I'd say, a couple of things that I'd say, is I support selling the higher-priced ticket to the other towns. We have a unique relationship there where the people in that community are actually closer to the beach than we are, and they've been getting this benefit for decades, I would guess, I mean, I don't know, but quite a long time. And I think that they deserve a little bit of a benefit from this situation. I think, as you were saying, Mr. Bangert, that that will in turn add revenue to our operation, because I don't think these three hundred, or these three hundred and four people are going to buy the stickers. If you drop the price, you may get three hundred and four more people to buy stickers at a lower price, and if you cut it in half, that's thirty thousand dollars if you cut it, you know, it's a big number. So, I think that, I think that we should take consideration that the people in that area should be able to use that. I think it's important to keep a strong relationship with Marshfield, I think we rely on them for public safety, we rely on them for water, although everybody knows we're paying a commercial rate for the water, and, you know, we'll deal with that at a later time, but it's important to keep that relationship strong because, in fact, our two communities are melded at that point.
This lady, if you could identify yourself, please. This lady, if you could identify yourself, please. Address also.
Christina Brown, Humming Rock Gifts, 11 Marshfield Ave., Humrock.
Thank you.
I think the bottom line is revenue, as you said, and I can speak from experience. I've owned my store for 27 years. I rarely see a Situate resident use our parking lot. It's Marshfield residents who use the Humrock parking lot in Humrock. And Situate, we welcome Situate, and we love when Situate comes to visit us, but let's face it, we're off the beaten path, and they use the Situate beaches, you know, the Situate proper beaches, not Humrock Beach. And it, that's my only point. My neighbors couldn't have said it any better than, they say better than I could. They're, it's hurting our businesses, San Zen Cafe and Humming Rock Gifts and all the other businesses as well, because those, most of our revenue in that area comes from the Marshfield side. So, by ostracizing them, you ostracize us, and it doesn't make any sense to us. So, we're asking for that reduced rate. Even $50, I think we got a kind of a consensus with people that over $50, Marshfield residents aren't going to pay. They're going to go to Wrexham Beach. They're going to go to all the other beaches, because they can buy a sticker for their own town. They won't come to Humrock. So, you know, within reason, it just makes sense to reconsider this.
Mr. Murray?
Just a data point. I'm sure this was said by Mr. Hall or yourself or somebody. So, how much is a Marshfield sticker for a Marshfield resident to go to Wrexham?
$30.
Thirty. Okay. So, you think if it was $100, ma'am, I understand this is just your opinion, but you think if it was $100, that would have the same prohibitive effect as a $200?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I told you, you could talk on this, and I apologize.
Peron Howe again.
Thank you.
We did, we did get this petition going, and the consensus, as Chris mentioned, was with all of the people, they did not balk at $50. $50 is 100% increase over what was 2009 prices. Anything above that, they all expressed that they would probably go to Marshfield beaches and not come to Humrock. I know that I've experienced probably a 20% decline in revenue. Is some of that the economy? Absolutely. Is a lot of it the parking situation? Absolutely. They make it clear on a daily basis. I can't tell you how many people were pleased that both Chris and I were coming here tonight to come in front of you and say, absolutely, please reconsider this. And I understand that your beach commission was well-intentioned, and I get that it's about revenue, but I think you forgot the businesses of Humrock and the impact that it's having on us to make this decision. And if this water issue that I'm hearing about is in some way playing into that, couldn't we at least put apples to apples and have it addressed in a water way and not hit the seasonal businesses with an 800% increase to somehow offset this disparity?
Hold on, Mr. Murray. I know that came up, but I'll be candid with you, that doesn't factor into my decision on this. So, I mean, that's a separate issue that the Board can address in the future if it so decides, and we'll leave it at that. I will say this, because I just want to, I haven't said anything, so I just put my two cents in. First of all, you know, and again, I don't mean any disrespect, just respectfully disagree, that I don't think it was a wrong decision. I don't think it's a bad decision. So, I want to put that out there, because I know some members do. I know Tony does. I don't. But, as I say, I think, you know, the committee was put together by the Board. The committee was basically told to go out and take a look at it. In the process of doing it, the one thing that stuck to me with respect to Marshfield residents, which Tony speaks to, which I can hear, is what I call equity, fairness argument. You know, residents of Marshfield have had an opportunity in the past to go, and now all of a sudden, they're being hit with basically an increased fee, 800%. Let's face it, it's basically the going rate for all the surrounding towns. On the flip side, though, and with all due respect, because it really doesn't go to your businesses, it goes to the general issue of Marshfield residents, which is, they're Marshfield residents, just like Norwell residents and Cohasset. They had a benefit to be able to utilize the town of Situate beaches at a reduced rate that no other town had. And, you know, the committee went out and took a look at it and said, look, we're going to go across the board. The fairness issue is now being put across the board, to say that all residents outside non-residents are going to pay the same rate. I think, at this point, since the Board's endorsed it, my position is to continue it for one year. As I said to you, I don't think it's wrong. I think we should collect the data and then go back and take a look at it next year. Obviously, the numbers so far show that the Marshfield residents have not bought stickers. And I think, ladies, you're right. You know, I think it's fair to say that if you're a Marshfield resident, you're going to go and buy a $30 ticket to go to the remaining other five beaches of the town of Marshfield. I will say, and this is what I did, somebody had mentioned this to me, that's why I looked up the beaches, and Mr. Hall, that's why I addressed the issue with you, which is, you know, if it's a quid pro quo issue with the town of Marshfield on beaches, I think the town of Marshfield should turn around to the town of Situate and say, you know what? If you want to be able to go to the Situate beaches at a reduced rate in the future, why don't we work a partnership out? What about the Situate residents? Go down to Wrexham, go down to Green Harbor, or Sunrise, or Brant Rock. Then I'd be in a position of saying, you know what? That fairness, that equity issue that I was talking about originally, would be fair. Because it's not just fair to the town of resident, the residents of the town of Marshfield, it's fair to us, the town of Situate, which we, as Board of Selectmen, are elected to represent fairly. So, I look at this, I looked at the report, I'm glad that the committee went back to take a look at the issue, and, you know, I support the committee's recommendations. Now, from a business perspective, I totally empathize with the situation, because I can see that your business are going to be more frequented by Marshfield residents. I think it would be a shame if residents of Marshfield decide to take it out on businesses in Humrock and say that, you know, we're not going to go there. On the other hand, it's a simple fact, if they're not going to go there, they're not going to frequent your business. But I certainly hope they don't boycott. At this point, their tickets or their stickers are still good until July 1st, so I don't think you should be feeling any effect of that, because they can still go down there. Obviously, after July 1st, I would anticipate they will.
And that's why we're here tonight, because we think it's a perfect time for you to reconsider.
And I have to tell you right now, I looked at the petition you put together, and I commend you for doing it. I hope, I'd love to see you do it for other things within the Situate, with Situate, but that's another issue. That's my own, you know, issue on this, that's my position on it, and so, I put my cards on the table. Hold on one second, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, because there is a member of the Board of Selectmen here, as well as to the audience, this has got nothing to do, from my perspective, at all with water, the water supply issue, at all. There's no, there's been no private conversations, there's been no public discussions whatsoever, at all, in any way, shape, or form, by anything at all, any person I've ever heard of about this being a water-related issue, at all. Okay? Period. Having said that, I actually live in walking distance from a beach here in Situate, so I've never bought a beach sticker, because I walk. And Mr. Banger did point out that this is really a parking issue in addition to the beach issue. And I'm not trying to be cutesy, and neither was Mr. Banger, about the fact that most people drive. But I also do want the word to go forth that this is not denying access, it's restricting vehicular, or limiting vehicular, or charging for vehicular access, not access to the stores, not access to the beaches by other means. And then I also do want to think, there was a time, about six or seven years ago, I did call the Marshfield Town Hall, because I do spend a fair bit of time down in Brant Rock, and I did see, want to see if there was a way that I could drive and park my car down there. And there wasn't an out-of-town sticker for people at the time, for Situate at the time. And I think that would be something kind of worth investigating. Again, though, because I agree with Mr. Vignani, that the historical relationship here and so on is different, but maybe once we get this resolved one way or the other, or next year, what, I'd like to see if there's a way we could work it out, so that Situate residents could have an off-campus or a...
Reciprocity.
Thank you. Out-of-town, yeah, reciprocity. Just as a separate, as a separate issue, because I don't want y'all to get all caught up in that, because I think there's separate things going on here. But you brought it up, so it's good.
Selectmen Hall?
Just one more point. If there was some way that I can arrange an interrelationship of getting beach stickers at the same price, I would wholeheartedly agree with that. My only point is, Situate people having the opportunity to buy a Marshfield sticker would not come. People from Brant Rock aren't going to go to Minnet Beach.
No, I understand that.
I'm not going to go to Minnet Beach. I'm not going to go to Brant Rock Beach. Humrock is near where I live. That's the whole gist of it, that it's because of the proximity to Marshfield and to Humrock. Even if we offered it, Situate people would not buy those stickers, because they have their own beaches closer to home. That's my, our point.
No, yes, sir, I understand that point, and I don't pretend that the numbers would match up at all in terms of usage, because I fully agree with you that more Marshfield residents are going to go to Humrock than Situate people are going to go to any other Marshfield beach. So, that's why I really wanted to drive home the point, that I see it as a separate issue, but nonetheless, something that downstream we should maybe think about. That's all.
Absolutely. And I just predict that there's going to be empty parking lots this summer. If you don't reconsider, there's going to be an empty parking lot. If you do reconsider, there won't be. And it's as simple as that. I will buy a $30 beach sticker and go to Wrexham. And I, I could go buy Gerard's fountain, buy turkey sandwiches, instead of going to San Zen. I won't want to boycott it, but if I'm going to Wrexham, and that's right on the way, that's where I'm going to spend my money on the weekends.
Thank you, Selectmen Hall.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bradley, if you have anything to add that has not been said, please do it briefly, because I want to move this meeting on.
Regarding the beach sticker pricing for $100, you can park down there 20 times for that $100 in a private lot. Because of the hurricane of 1838 dividing our towns, and as a Marshfield resident, I'm really appalled that we don't have a reciprocal agreement with Situate. Situate people should be invited to use Marshfield beaches. We have in total 10 great, beautiful beaches and almost 50 miles of coastline. There's no reason why there should be a wall up. Absolutely should not be a reason. It should be an affordable ticket. How many beach stickers are sold in Marshfield every, in Situate every year? Which is my next and last question.
Hold on. You know, I'll be candid with you, I don't have that number in front of me.
Do we know how many beach stickers, Mr.?
It's got to be, it's in the thousands. You know, it's got to be like...
7,000 homes.
Two, two, three thousand. 3,500.
3,500 beach stickers. Okay, and a line item, the line item is $7,000. That sticker costs no more than 25 cents to make. So, there's a lot of fat in that line item, so my recommendation would be we could save 6,000 right there.
Mr. Bradley, I would respectfully disagree there. Or, Mr. White, I'm sorry, I would respectfully disagree, because you don't understand the personnel and the, the, that goes through the whole process. But anyway, again, briefly, if you don't mind, because I want to move aside.
The bottom line is, please let the Marshfield residents use that Humrock beach to keep these merchants and businesses. Reduce the price now, effective today, if you can, because if not, you've got 200 customers on this petition right here, and you've got sales down 66%. Anytime sales are down 66%, you've got to do something, and it's usually price. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burbine?
One comment. Sometimes, gentlemen, it's not always about the money. It really isn't.
This is not about the money, Ms. Burbine. This is trying to make sure that we... Thank you very much. Any other questions?
One last comment.
Yes, Mr. Vignani?
I think it's, I think it's our duty to look after the town of Situate in the long term, and I think that this decision is going to have long-term effects. I think it, I think we're looking at this a little bit out of the bottle. I think if we lived a half a mile from a beach and had a benefit for decades and decades, and it got pulled away from us, we'd be just as upset as some of the people that are coming before us, and some of the people that have written us letters. And I think that this is the time to make a change. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion that we change or create a new beach sticker for the town of Marshfield to have access to Humrock Beach at a price of $75.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that motion for discussion purposes.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Murray. Discussion from the Board.
I just want to point out...
Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out that this is one of the more difficult votes in the last several months, certainly, that I've had. Given the sense of the Board, I believe this motion is going to fail. I wanted to second it to help send a strong signal that I would like very much to, at the minimum, revisit this from the accounting point of view and the logistical point of view at the, at the end of this, at the end of this season. I just wanted to make sure that this is really, that the sense of the, that the fact...
Don't count it out yet. Let's vote.
But I just wanted to point out there that I really do see, and I'm not just trying to fence it here, I really see, this is a very, this is a subtly complicated issue with ramifications on both sides, and there's a lot of merit on both sides of this one.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion, or not questions, but discussion? Okay. Fair enough. All in favor of Mr. Vignani's motion? All say, say, say aye, please.
Aye.
All against, say nay.
Nay.
It's a three-to-two vote, motion fails. Thank you very much, folks. Moving on to our next agenda item, it's the annual appointments, agenda item number 15. So, if we can start from the top.
I move to re...
Hold on one second.
Whoops, sorry.
Hold on. Kim, are you ready?
Aye.
Okay, hang on. I'm almost ready.
Okay. I move to appoint Patricia Avon Casey, the affirmative action officer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can put it on your resume, Tricia.
Moving on to the Affordable Housing Trust. Is there a motion?
Move to reappoint John Dennehy, John Helen, Robert Cox, Paul Mew.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Can I ask Kim Walker a question? Have all of these people, if they're on this list, they've contacted you and want to be reappointed?
Yes.
Okay.
There's still two positions open, one of which was by a new applicant who was unable to be here tonight. His name was Jack Holkey.
Chair.
Yes.
He's not interested.
Oh, he's not interested? Okay. Well, that's easy. Take him off. Two positions open. Anybody interested? Please feel free to submit an application. Okay, moving on to the Animal Control Board. There is one opening. Guess what? We don't have any applicants. So, anybody interested in the Animal Control Board? Please submit your application to the Selectmen's office. Moving on to the Archivist. Is there a motion?
Move to reappoint Elizabeth Foster as the Archivist.
Is there a second? Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to...
Anybody else?
Aye.
Sorry.
All right, that's unanimous. Moving on to the Beautification Commission.
Move to reappoint Donna Banger and Kathleen Hillman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Just to let people know, there are four openings on the Beautification Commission, and we'd ask that please consider it. Also, moving on to the Board of Health, there's one reappointment.
Move to reappoint Francis Lynch.
Second. By who? By who?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Moving on to the Bylaw Review Committee.
Move to reappoint Benjamin Spruill.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Three, is there four?
Aye.
Unanimous, all unanimous. Moving on to the Board of Registars.
Move to reelect Jane Wilder.
Seconded by anybody?
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the Cable TV Committee.
Move to reappoint Richard Long and Vincent Calicious.
Second.
Do those separately?
Oh, all right.
Move to reappoint Richard Long.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all say aye?
Aye.
Um...
Move to reappoint Vincent Calicious.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all say aye?
Aye.
Say nay?
Nay.
One nay. Moving on to the Citizen Representative to the Scholarship Committee.
Move to appoint, reappoint Judith Byrne Ariel.
Second. Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else?
Aye.
Mr. Murray, did you say aye?
Aye.
There's unanimous. Moving on to the Commission on Disabilities.
Move to reappoint Ann Breen and Robert Tarantino.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, for CP, um...
Unanimous.
For CPA? Mr. Chair, I'm just going to go one by one on these...
Please.
Because they're all sort of different.
Yep.
Um, and as a liaison, I'll just run through if I may. I move to reappoint George Trafton as the Housing Authority Representative to the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, George. Uh, second.
I move to reappoint William Limbacher as the Planning Board Representative CPA Committee.
Seconded by who?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next. The Historical Society, we do not have one yet, we will need to ask them to do so. Move on to, next one, Recreation.
Like to move to reappoint Richard Lane as the Recreation Authority Representative to the CPA Committee.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, move to the next one.
Like to reappoint Mr. Frank Snow as the Conservation Commission Representative to the CPA Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Now we have three, there are three current at-large members of this Community Preservation Commission, and there are, uh, three people are looking for a reappointment, there are two new applications. Is that what it is?
I would like, yep.
Okay.
Like to reappoint John Bullman as one of the at-large CPA committee members.
Seconded by who?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Like to reappoint Mr. Paul Scott to the Community Preservation Act Committee at-large position.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Scott Roberts as a new member of the Community Preservation.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray, all in favor?
I, if I may, for discussion, I, I, we won over Mr. Wood.
How many slots are there?
Oh, yes, thank you. I would move, well, we have a motion on the floor. My, um, my intent would be to make a motion on Joe Wood.
Okay, point of order, hold on one second. A point of order?
How many slots are there available?
Four.
There are four at-large positions.
And there are...
You know what, and I misspoke, so let me say this again. There are four at-large, there are three current, okay? And we have five applicants seeking the position for the fourth. So I misspoke by saying there were only three, there are not. There are four positions, there are three current members, and there are two new people who are seeking, uh, appointment on. So, there we go.
There's a motion for Scott Roberts as a third position.
Okay, I'll...
If I may, again, I, I, I see a potential problem here, I understand what's going on. I spoke to the Chairman of the CPC. I asked about Mr. Wood for reappointment as well as the others. He said he comes to, goes to all the meetings, uh, he doesn't have a problem, he's a good member. I fear that if this continues the way it's going, we might pass over Mr. Wood, who, uh, I don't think deserves to be passed over.
Might I suggest this, though? Hold on, hold on. If I just suggest...
Your motion's on the floor.
Excuse me, gentlemen, hold on. What I'm going to say, suggest is this, for discussion, we, we are filling the third slot, there's still a fourth slot available, and my suggestion would be, let's go back to talk about Mr. Wood. That would be my position.
I respectfully understand, and I do not want to vote against my good friend, Mr. Roberts, uh, but I think that the way we've done this all the way through the first two or three pages has gone down the line as they've come before us, and I would like to, it would, I would find it necessary to vote against Mr. Roberts, which I don't want to do, because I think we should deal with Mr. Wood, who's a current member, before we make appointments, uh, for people applying.
As a point of order, I agree with Mr. Norton. Or as a comment, I agree with Mr. Norton.
I, I guess I have a question. How would you ever...
So, it's just a matter of who we're appointing first, correct, John?
Correct.
Well, there's still three names with two positions left.
That's right. Well, I, I agree with Joe. So, you know, Mr. Roberts has been nominated and seconded. I will next nominate Mr. Wood, correct?
You can do it that way, you could withdraw your motion, and then we do Mr. Wood, or we could vote up the, the motion as it stands. Those are the three, those are the two options.
Doesn't matter who we, in my opinion, doesn't matter who we vote for first.
Okay.
Except I remind the board that there was a third applicant who I will nominate.
Right.
All right, so why don't we do this, gentlemen? Let's, let's vote on the motion as it stands, and then we'll address the next issue. Is that okay?
Sure.
I, I, we'll do that, if that's the chair's desire, I, I...
That, that's what I would say right now.
It puts me in a position of voting against, uh, someone who I might want to appoint, because I want Mr. Wood to...
Okay, all right.
That's fine, I can deal with that.
Would you consider withdrawing your motion?
I understand, let's say hypothetically that Mr. Wood wasn't going to be reelected, and I don't, I don't even know Mr. Wood.
I don't either.
Yeah, so, but if that was the case, don't you just go by whoever you want to be on the committee?
You could do that, yep, yep, yep.
I mean, if, as opposed to...
If you have a reason...
And I have no agenda, I just, I, you said three, I got missed, and I vote, I put...
And you have every right to do that, don't get me wrong. I mean, you have, it's every right to, to not appoint Mr. Wood if you feel that way.
Right, and I, but there's, there's...
The other wrinkle here, just to make clear to everybody in the audience, is reappointments are not automatic, but it's been tradition that if the person has been doing very well and all that sort of stuff, and there's no obvious reason why not. So, that's why, my mistake, Tony, as well, I know John said...
I don't think it's a mistake.
My mistake for just going through the reappointments first, but that was my intent, was to nominate after Paul Scott, which we just unanimously said yes to. My next nomination was in fact going to be Joe Wood.
But I don't think that's procedure. We can nominate whoever we want.
Absolutely right.
In order we want.
Absolutely right.
So, we don't have to actually, again hypothetically, vote Mr. Wood down to get Ms. Fenton on if, if the thought was to go in a certain way. I don't, I don't have any...
Well, you would have to vote, in order to, if, if your motion prevails...
Yeah. Someone would make a motion for Mr. Wood next.
Exactly, and, and...
I would, I would suggest this. I would suggest, um, voting, voting the motion as it stands, and then addressing the issue next. I think if, if we do that, I, I would, you know, aside from the procedure, which I totally respect what you're saying, because truth be told, we should have probably gone through Mr. Wood first. I totally agree. But I would probably, I would say, let's vote this, then we'll address, address that issue immediately, separate and apart from procedure.
Not, if I may, just, but I don't want to prolong this at all, uh, but I want to be fair to everybody, because I think we get three good candidates for two positions, that's what it comes down to. I, my thought would be, and, would be, that I know Mr. Roberts is a member of the Historical Society. No, he's not. I think she had my good idea.
They come and they go, don't they?
There's a vacancy.
Do I send in my annual dues now?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, there was an opening, uh, represented from the Historical Society to the Conservation, to the CPC.
Don't they have to?
My thought would be, uh, I'd love to see Scott appointed to that, then we could appoint Ms. Fenton and Mr. Wood to the open position. That's just my thought, but that would depend upon the Historical Society agreeing with my thinking.
I think Mrs. Fenton would be more effective than the CPC than I would think of her.
Don't sell yourself short, Mr. Roberts. You've done a lot of good things for the town. All right, so let's, let's, um, let's vote the motion. It's presently first...
Who was the motion for?
It was for Mr. Roberts, by Mr. Vignani, seconded by you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, moving on, next one. Mr. Harris, do you have one?
I'd like to move Joseph Wood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye?
If I may, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Here's the problem, I, I, I would want, had wanted to put Mrs. Fenton in nomination. I also want to vote, as you can plainly see, for Mr. Wood. I need voting for Mr. Wood now eliminates Mrs. Fenton, and that's what I wanted to do, the other way, nominate Mr. Wood first, and that's...
Well, one of the people...
What I perceive happening is happening, and that's, so be it.
But you know what?
It didn't matter.
So be it.
Okay.
If, if, when needs know logistics, I could withdraw my application.
You've already been appointed, you'd have to write a letter.
But he hasn't been sworn in. He hasn't been sworn in.
But I'm sorry.
Well, here's the predicament that, you know, appointments always pose for people, and that is that, you know, when you have somebody who's been on a committee or a board, and they're asking and seeking reappointment, and they've been to the meetings and they've been doing things, it's pretty hard, we're pretty hard-pressed to say no, unless, you know, they've been underperforming or there've been problems. That's not been the case with Mr. Wood. Having said that, when you have one slot open, you end up with one, two, or three other applicants who are well-qualified for it. The board is always faced and confronted with having to select one person, and it puts us in the unenviable position of having to select somebody. Unfortunately, there can only be one position, one person, and it's no reflection on the ones who don't get the position. We just ask them to reapply to either another commission or come back again next year. And, and Ms. Fenton has done a wonderful job in the advisory, she's done a wonderful job with Sustainable Situit, she's been involved with Trails, and, and, you know, frankly, there'll be another position open on this committee for preservation, I presume, next year. There're going to be other slots. So, again, it's no slight to anybody, it's just, you know, the board has to be in a position of selecting, and, so, I, again, that's, that's my take on it.
I just want to go on, on record that I obviously want to vote for Mr. Wood, I brought his name up. I also want to put Ms. Fenton's name in nomination, but by nominating, but by voting for Mr. Wood, that won't be possible. I just want to state it as I just stated it, and put the record show that. Thank you.
Okay. I think we had a nomination, right? We did. So, first, seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, unanimous. Moving on to the next, um, Conservation Commission.
Move to reappoint Penny Scott Pipes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Anthony Jones.
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Constable.
Move to appoint Todd Reardon.
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint Richard Ramponi.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Brendan Lynch.
Second. Pointing to Council on Aging, now. Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh...
Gerald Ferramonte.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, um, let's see, there is a, um, one, one-year position available, and this was the applicant who came before us, Miss Dale Balog. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Dale Balog to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now, moving on to the Fair Housing Officer.
Um, I am going to, um, postpone that, and so we're moving on to the Fair Housing Officer. Thank you.
Move to appoint Pritchard Finchesi for Fair Housing Officer.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Let's get it straight. It's, is it, you guys are messing me up, because I'm going to say Vincasey...
It is.
And then I'm like, is it Vinchesi? Because I keep saying Vinchesi, and unfortunately, it's not an Irish name. It's Vincasey.
Vincasey.
There we go.
We're going to tell you, Tony Vignani.
So, Vincasey, very good, okay. We've got a nomination?
It only took a year to get that straight.
I've heard one of them.
Well, that's okay. There we go.
I was confused, too. I'm glad you brought it up.
I keep going, I'm like, I'm going to get it right, because I'm afraid to say your last name, because I don't want to...
It's going to be on here again, I'll get it right.
Stop appointing.
Yeah, there you are.
All right, we got a nomination. Did I hear a second? I apologize. Seconded by Mr. Murray, all in favor? Aye. Next, Fence Viewer. Next, fence viewer.
I can get this one. Appoint Jason Harris as fence viewer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, no relation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to reappoint Neil Duggan as field driver.
Second.
Mr. Norton, seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, now we're on to the Historic Commission.
Move to reappoint Douglas Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye.
Move to reappoint Arthur Beal.
Second.
Um, all in favor, aye.
Move to reappoint Harvey Gates, and second.
Mr. Harris. Aye, unanimous.
I'm sorry, he would like to be an associate member, he's actually going off as a full member, and would like to be an associate member, Harvey Gates.
Okay, we've some moved.
So moved.
Okay.
There's one.
That means there's one available position.
Okay, moving on, next, to the Licensing Agent.
Move to appoint Lieutenant Detective Michael Stewart.
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Vignani, would you like this one for the local auction permit agent?
Nope, don't see anyone I wanna vote for.
Move to appoint Patricia A. Vincaze.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye. MBTA representative.
Move to reappoint Al Bangert.
Is there a second? Mr. Norton, second, all in favor, aye. Is that unanimous, aye? Yes, unanimous, next.
Move to reappoint Ann Burbine to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and South Shore Coalition.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Nay. Next, North River Commission.
Move to reappoint Joseph P. Norton, Jr.
Seconded by who? Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to reappoint Joseph P. Norton, Senior.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Move to appoint Joyce, Joseph P. Norton for Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Second.
Mr. Harris, second, all in favor, aye.
Move to reappoint Anthony D'Onofrio-
This is the building-
-on the Public Buildings Commission, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Seconded by who?
Joe.
Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
And secondly, Sean Mulcurran, also with Public Buildings Commission.
Mr. Norton, second, all in favor, aye. Recreation Commission.
Move to, uh, reappoint Chris Roberts for the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor, aye. Next to the Renewable Energy Committee.
Move to appoint Bruce Meacham to the Renewable Energy Committee.
As a new applicant?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye. Unanimous, second, next one.
Even though she didn't appear tonight, um, she sent an email, and I had some email discussion back and forth with her, and, and I believe this woman is very well-qualified, so I'd like to nominate Carrie Cullen-Hitt to the Renewable Energy Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on to the Situit Cultural Council.
Reappoint Durham Lang.
Seconded.
Second.
Mr. Norton, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, next.
Reappoint Patrice May.
Second.
Mr. Norton, all in favor, aye. Unanimous, sec, uh, next one.
And finally, Lisa Griz, or Grizy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor, aye. Moving on to the Street Acceptance Committee.
Move to reappoint John Danny, William Limbacher, and Kevin Cafferty.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
There's one vacancy there.
Is there aye over here?
Aye.
Aye. I'll vote aye accept on mine, which I am abstaining on. So, unanimous for all, four for me, and unanimous for Mr. Limbacher and Mr. Cafferty. Next, moving on to the Surveyor of Lumber, Measure of Wood and Bark.
I move to reappoint Al Bangert as the Surveyor of Lumber, Measure of Wood and Bark.
Did we get a resume on that?
Is there a second?
I guess so.
Mr. Harris, all in favor, say aye.
Chair, can I have a point of order on the next one, I ask that you postpone this, if I could just make the motion for the board in keeping with the motion that the board made for a reappointment of the Town Treasurer early this year, that the Town Accountant's reappointment be made, and contingent upon successful completion of her FY11 goals and objectives.
So, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, moving on to the Traffic Rules Regulations Committee.
Sorry, there was another one on the list.
Did I, oh, the Assistant Town-
We'll do that in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, we're doing that one, right, later, right? I'm sorry, we're postponing that, thank you. Moving on to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee.
Give a move Alfred Elliott, Kevin Cafferty, Matt Thompson, Dorothy Cook, and Karen McDonald.
Second.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Murray, all in favor, aye. Unanimous, moving on to Waterways.
I'd like to move to reappoint Peter Toppin to the Waterways Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Move to appoint Mary McLaughlin to the Waterways Commission.
Second.
By Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye. Unanimous.
Move to appoint David Glancy to the Waterways Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
If I could just point out, as Mr. Danny, he said earlier, this is a situation where we had one more, or two more candidates, and we had excellent candidates for slots available, and Mr. White, you're sitting here in the audience, I know, I hope you can continue to be an active associate member, knowing you the way I do, I don't think you won't be inactive, and you will certainly speak your mind, and, uh, please continue to come to the meetings, you're a very valued associate member, and we had a number of good applicants.
That's great.
Thank you.
Could I, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Brad White as an associate member?
Second.
By Mr. Murray, all in favor? Aye, unanimous.
Move Harvey Kusberg as an associate member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Donald Houlihan, uh, as an associate member.
Second.
Mr. Murray, all in favor, aye. Okay, moving on to the Water Resource Committee.
Move to reappoint Robert Murray.
Second.
Mr. Murray, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Move to reappoint Daniel Martin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, aye. Uh, there is one opening on this committee still, so if anybody's interested in the Water Resource Committee, please submit an application to the Selectment's Office. Moving on to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the final appointment tonight.
Move to reappoint Peter Moran and Edwood Tibbetts.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, that completes the appointments, folks, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 16, which happens to be acceptance of gifts, um, from the Recreation Department and memorials.
Move the Board's luckmen vote to accept the kind gift of $400 from Situit Health Service on behalf of the Recreational Commission and the Town of Situit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And move the Board's luckmen to accept the kind gift of two granite memorial benches, one bench will replace Edwood Oswat Golf Course, and the other at the Situit Marine Park.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 17, which is the Town Administrator's Report. Ms. Vinkeze.
Uh, quickly, gentlemen, just to review a couple of highlights since your last meeting, we had an informational session for all boards and committees, June 16th, on the changes to the open meeting law. There were about 20 folks that attended, and Bernice Brown and I, um, tried to answer questions and provide a variety of information and materials, um, to folks of those committees as we prepare for those changes. We believe they'll be delayed to November 1st, um, we got a new directive today for the Attorney General's Office about, uh, changes in the posting requirements, so, um, we'll be dealing with the transition into this for the next few months. The town had two, every municipality in the Commonwealth had two unexpected, uh, elections as a result of the death of Senator Kennedy, we received our reimbursement from the Commonwealth. The Town Accountant informs me that the board must take a vote as to how those funds will be distributed and allocated, and, um, we will satisfy first any deficit that the Town Clerk's budget, uh, experienced as a result of that, and the remaining balance will close to protect. We did do an additional appropriation at the November town meeting, um, so she will have some surplus, but she does have some shortfall now because of elections.
In that case, is there a motion?
Move the Board's luckmen vote to apply the special election proceeds to reduce any deficit in the Town Clerk's budget for expenditures related to the special elections on December 8th, 2009, and January 19th, 2010.
Seconded?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous?
Um, Pier 44, I'm pleased to inform you all that we closed on June 16th with a lot of people doing a lot of work to pull that together before, during, and since. I particularly, uh, want to take this opportunity to thank our Building Commissioner Neil Duggan, Al Bangert, our DPW Superintendent, and Deputy Chief John Murphy for the tremendous help they've provided to me as we, uh, secure the building, realarm it, fire sprinkle it, EVAC operations, um, and, and the like that we will be doing. The building is not, uh, able to be entered to, uh, for a bit. We have substantial cleaning to do, and to make it safe for anybody to go in. Um, we'll be spending, um, some short money to get some things in order, um, but the DPW will have, uh, a big job in cleaning out a lot of debris, and I will be identifying surplus equipment that we will first make available to town departments, and then auction the remaining.
And at some point in our next meeting, we'll have a charge for feasibility committee to go for it?
Yes, actually, that's why I'm glad you delayed your meeting, so I can work on that one in return.
Just a comment on that? You know, we're gonna be, as it says here, and we've all discussed, we're gonna have a ad hoc committee of citizens to help advise and brainstorm and all that sort of stuff, um, and we've been getting some people who volunteered their names already, but we've also said, well, we're gonna be putting out a call for, for interest. Is there a reason why we can't just put the call out now, so this can happen concurrently? What I don't want to have happen is, we get the charge in two weeks, three weeks, or a month, or whatever it may be, which is fine, and then we say, okay, now we're gonna be starting accepting applicants, everybody give us an application in two or three weeks. If we could do this kind of concurrently, obviously, we're not gonna impanel anybody, any of the applicants, until the charge of the committee is put out, but if we could just say, okay, anybody's interested, send in us a letter by July 9th, which is clearly weeks ahead of us needing to appoint anybody, but that way, we could sort of get people in. I just don't want to, I don't want to have things have to go in series if they could go in parallel, that's all.
Just a comment, I'd like to ask, Kim, how many, uh, letters of interest have we gotten so far, approximately?
Ten or 12.
Already?
And I would anticipate you want, um, representatives from other boards and committees to a certain extent, and also residents of the community that have a particular expertise in architecture, or feasibility, or something. I mean, I'm still working through that part.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and so that-
So, we can put, you know, we want to make sure we capture those elements in the community as well.
Yeah, so we're gonna want, you know, we're only gonna appoint X number, which we don't even know yet, because we don't know what that number is, but it's just, the more applicants, the merrier, and we have been telling people that we would put out a, a formal request, just like we do with all the other panels, so.
Do we know who we're looking for, like Tricia just said?
We're not gonna appoint anybody yet.
I think you just did, by bringing it up for discussion. For the-
What do you mean?
Thousands of people that are watching, you know, they'll send in, uh-